All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 2025 meeting of the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Greg King, Chair. If everyone will please begin with the pledge.
And with that as well, would everyone please join me in silencing those electronics for
the duration of the hearing? Much appreciated. First order of business will be approval of minutes. Can we go ahead and get a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Mr. Elder, thank you. Do I have a second, Ms. Jones? No? All right. Edits, corrections, updates? Ms. Jones?
Just a couple little things, questions more. On page five of 11, the third bullet point where it says upstairs at 113 is where the applicant will reside and the downstairs will be storage for their restaurant at 111. I don't recall them saying that, that, I mean, I know they said they're going to be living there and they're also going to be using it for storage, but I don't think a family of four is just living upstairs. So I don't know if that just needs to be checked on or...
Yeah, we can check on the recording, but I thought they had alluded to something about storage.
Yeah, they said they would have both, but they didn't say like they were exclusively living upstairs and exclusively storage downstairs.
Okay. We'll check the wording of that on the recording.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then on page 10 of 11, it just, the very, the second from last sentence, it's the, where it says provide continue with the requirements of the landscape buffer. I wasn't really sure. That didn't really make sense. Maybe she'd provide continuance maybe or?
What about provide continuance of the requirements of the landscape buffer area, maybe?
That would make more sense.
To provide continuance of the requirements of the landscape buffer area.
Ms. Jones, anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all in favor approving minutes as edited, corrected, updated, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, like, son. All right. All right, shall we go ahead and get staff sworn?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Edgar, first docket item, please.
Docket PZ-25-024, an application has been filed by Paramount LTD for a preliminary subdivision plan with eight lots on property located at Lake Stone Way and Paramount Way Prospect. The property is 7.4 acres and zoned R1 and R2 residential district.
And Ms. Barge, you'll have staff's presentation.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioner Anna Barge, Senior Planner. So this is the docket that Christie just read. So the zoning of this property is R1 and R2. The current land use is agricultural slash undeveloped. They're proposing eight single-family lots, which is why they called this in addition to the existing subdivision, because it's simply eight more lots. The total acreage is 7.4. The pre-application meeting was on June 27th with a neighborhood meeting on July 22nd. The technical review committee was in August. The adjoining property owner notices were mailed on September 2nd with the notice appearing in the Oldham era on September 4th. So for the site history, in August of 1987, there was a rezoning from AG to R1. And then in that same time, there was an approved preliminary plan for a subdivision with 302 single-family lots. And then both motions were approved with one abstention. Then in December of 2022, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan for the reserve at Paramount Estates. That's 155 single-family lots on a total of 150 acres. So these are the areas in question outlined in red. You can see here, this is the Paramount Way section, and this is the Lake Stone Way section. And you have the large plans provided in your packet if you'd like to look with more details. So this is the zoning. As you can see on your plan and this map, the R2 zoning cuts across at a weird angle right here. And so they have both R2 and this R1 in this little corner. So this is that plan. I mentioned the diagonal line right there. That's noted on their plan for the zoning difference. They're going to have three lots on this western side along Paramount with the open space right here. And then they're going to have five lots on the Lake Stone Way portion. The Oldham County future land use map predicts the use of this tract will be agricultural or rural. The proposed plan appears to be in conformance with all zoning and subdivision regulations. None of the parcels are located in the 100-year floodplain, and I've included the TRC comments in the packet at the end of the packet. For the notes, the applicant is proposing a preliminary subdivision plan comprised of eight lots on approximately 7.4 acres. The property is zoned R1 and R2 residential district. The lots will be single-family residential and will range in size from, that's supposed to say .67, I thought it saved when I corrected that, to 1.2 acres, but your packet has the correct information. So that's half, a little over half an acre to 1.2 acres. The Oldham County Board of Education determined that the maximum number of lots per year is 35, and that might sound weird when they're proposing eight lots, but that's just their standard allocation if there's enough school capacity. So if there's enough school capacity, everyone gets 35. So it's really just a checkmark in the process. So they'll be able to build all eight lots in one year if that's what they wish to do if they get approved today. So this is the zoning regulations for R1. They are following all of these. And the zoning regulations for R2, they're following all of these, no asks for variances or waivers. So these are some pictures, thanks to Google Street View. This is looking at Paramount Way right here, and this is the existing wall. So like the lots are going to start over here. So right now, as you can see, it's just farm fields, pasture. And then this is the Lake Stone Way portion, and there's some, the lots will be over here. And as you can see, this is that existing house right here that's right there. So in summary, the applicant is requesting an approval of the preliminary subdivision plan for eight lots across 7.4 acres. The approval applies only to the plan presented at the September 23rd, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. There shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at time of construction plan approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. Mr. Silliman.
Good morning. Jim Silliman, County Engineer and Stormwater Manager for the county. This will obviously disturb more than one acre of land, so they will be, the applicant will be required to provide construction plans to our office for a stormwater quality management and erosion control permit, as well as obtain a KYR-10 permit from the State Division of Water. We have already had some preliminary conversations with the designers about how to provide some stormwater detention for these lots. It's relatively small compared to some subdivisions we see. It only eight lots, but nonetheless, it does have to provide that stormwater detention and water quality in accordance with our ordinance. So we've begun those discussions. And then as far as, again, because of the size of it, it will not require a traffic impact study or traffic assessment.
Thank you. Mr. Silliman. All right, anything else from staff? Okay. Commissioners, questions of staff? Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll move into presentation from applicant, Mr. Swansburg.
As I pull this up, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Baxter, Ms. Edgar, good morning, everyone. I am Mike Swansburg with the law firm Swansburg and Smith, 117 West Main Street here in La Grange. I also have with me this morning Mike Hill with LD&amp;D Design, who's the engineer on this case, and as well as Jeff Johnson, who's with Paramount. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if right now is a good time to have both of them sworn in, just in case they have any, the ability to answer any questions that you all might have.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Also, oh, okay, go ahead.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, as I mentioned a second ago, I've got the honor of representing Paramount Limited, who is the applicant in this particular request. This is, as Ms. Barge has already indicated and Mr. Silliman's already indicated, this is a substantially smaller subdivision request than some that we are used to seeing here before you. It's only eight lots. So I want to talk a little bit about that and a little bit about the justification for why ultimately we think you should all, or we are requesting, I should say, you all to approve this particular request. And I'll go through some information that may be familiar to a bunch of you, but I do see some new faces. So I do want to make sure that they're also educated to the best of my ability on why it is, at the end of the day, we believe this is a good request for you all. So let's start with that request. And again, the applicant is coming before you all to seek approval of a preliminary plan for a limited addition, and that is what we are going to call it. It is, in fact, an addition to an existing Paramount Estates subdivision right off US 42 in the northeastern part of, I guess technically the eastern part or western part of the county, to convert these particular properties. And you've already seen this image. I tried to do my best with my shaky hand down here, for example, to get these drawn out. But these properties that you do see highlighted in red are the ones that we are asking to be converted to this particular design. And these are eight additional lots. And again, I want to emphasize that we are asking this request to be made without the need for any waivers or any variances or any amendments to the Oldham County zoning map. So again, no waivers, no variances, no changes to the zoning map. This is a straight request for a preliminary plan for a subdivision. Talk a little bit about the proposal itself. In this image, you've kind of seen, I'll just, Anna, for your benefit, the proposal is embedded within this because it's a slightly different one, only because this one's color-coded versus the one you guys have. So for your benefit of, if you all want it for your files, et cetera, it's, the presentation's on the screen there. You guys can poach from it. The proposed addition, as you've already heard, consists again of eight lots located approximately on 7.4 acres, presently zoned as a mix of R1 and R2. And just again, this line, this dotted line here is the divider, at least on this side, between R1 and R2. R1 being on this side, R2 being on this side. It actually cuts down this way as well. So all of this section is R2. All this section here for these couple of houses, and actually, every one of them is at least in part R1. Some of them are also part R2. But the proposed lots range between, as you heard before, .67 and 1.24 acres. I'm glad my math matches the staff's math on that, or 1.11 dwelling units per acre on average, which creates a low-density addition to the existing area, and it comports with both the R1 and R2 zones as defined within the Oldham County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. So we don't have a density issue with this particular request as well. It is consistent with both of those requirements in the zoning ordinance. Let's talk about guiding standards. And I always like to talk about guiding standards and what is the basis for an approval for you all from the legal perspective. What does the law say about this? Well, Oldham County Subdivision Regulation Section 3.2 provides that the commission, quote, "may approve the preliminary plat at any of the steps in which they are involved." So you do have the authority under that regulation to approve subdivisions, right? Seems to make sense. You guys do it all the time. But I always like to make sure that's in the record, that that is the legal basis for you having the authority to do this. And they're not exhaustive. The Oldham County Subdivision Regulation Section 1.2A through K set forth the following guidelines when considering subdivision development within the county. Again, this is not an exhaustive list. These are ones that I pulled that are relevant in particular to this request, and I want to walk through them real quick. One, to guide future growth and development patterns, excuse me, in Oldham County in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Two, to protect the character and social and economic stability of Oldham County while encouraging orderly and beneficial development. Three, to protect and conserve the value of land throughout Oldham County and the value of the buildings and improvements upon the land, and to minimize, excuse me, the conflicts among the uses of land and buildings. And four, to establish reasonable standards of design and procedures for subdivision and re-subdivision, including preparing and recording of plats and the equitable handling of all subdivision plats by providing uniform procedures and standards for observance by both the approving authorities and the subdividers. So we're all utilizing the same standards for approval as part of our consideration of this request today and elsewhere in other requests. Let's talk about the comprehensive plan. Now, I've heard and been told that the comprehensive plan cover is going to change. So this may or may not be the last time you all see this one from me, but I did include a copy of that comprehensive plan update on there. I tried to tilt it to make it more interesting than a flat surface so we can make it more fun for everybody. But I was told it is going to change, and I'm excited to use the new cover when it comes out after this body approves that comprehensive plan update. So let's talk about the comprehensive plan and how it is, how it comports, or how this request comports with that plan. Let's talk about some of the various objectives and goals. One, land use objective LU-1-1. It's ensuring that future land uses are compatible with surrounding land uses. That is a goal of the comprehensive plan. You want to make sure that your development is consistent with those that are around you, that you're not sitting as a random isolated anomaly within another common usage amongst neighboring lands. Two, transportation goal T-1-2-4, which suggests phasing of developments to accommodate road impact, right? So you want to make sure ultimately through that, that to the extent possible, you want to try as to phase your development so that the roads can catch up with you, because it's not always possible to build the roads in advance of a development. So you want to, to the extent possible, try to phase a development so that the roads can keep up with you and can maintain the services of getting people to and from where they need to be within the county. Three, community facilities and services goal CF-2-3-1, requiring easements where public sewers are available. This is not always the case here in Oldham County. A lot of folks, as we well know, are on septic systems in Oldham County, but if you are on a sewer, you want to make sure that you've got the proper easements. That is a goal of community facilities and services goal CF-2-3-1. And then for environment goal E-3-1-1, which encourages open space in subdivision design. I wanted to make sure that I put a mix of different types of goals within this particular plan. And I think, as we'll walk through here in a second, this particular plan meets all of these goals. So compatibility with surrounding development. Let's talk about that first one. So I highlighted before, the proposed addition would fill in two parcels that adjoin existing residential development, thus completing at least two street fronts of the existing Paramount Estates subdivision, right? So right now, as we've already heard, there's already a residential development in this area. And you can see literally across the street and also next to these particular area, and you can see literally across the street and also next to these particular properties are already homes that are on sized lots that are consistent with what it is that we are asking for today. What we're doing, for lack of a better term, is filling in these particular land areas with homes that would be consistent with all the homes that are already around it. And again, we've already talked about in other contexts, but I'll throw out, for those of you who may not be familiar with, one of the goals also in development at Oldham County is to do infill development of particular land areas so that you're not leapfrogging and just creating pockets of development here and there. What we're doing here is actually, again, filling in areas that are already, again, there are already roadways in place, there are already sewers in place, we're just filling in these particular areas to complete these two blocks. But it is consistent, as I mentioned before, with the uses of the land that do abut it on the north side, as well as, at least in this case, to the west. Low impact on transportation infrastructure, right? We talk about that phasing, that you want to make sure that you're phasing development to reduce the impact on transportation. Mr. Silliman's already talked about the idea, we don't necessarily have to do a traffic impact study because we're only talking about eight lots. We're not talking about a 200-lot development, we're talking about eight. And so, the impact on US-42, for example, is going to be de minimis. But I do want to highlight, though, for the commission's benefit, that this proposed addition comes nearly 40 years. You may have seen it on the slide before. 1987 is when this body first approved the Paramount Estates subdivision plan. 1987, nearly 40 years ago, the Planning Commission approved the original idea for Paramount. And what we're talking about today is utilizing the existing transportation infrastructure, has already been discussed on Paramount Way and Lakestone Way here, which minimizes the land disruption. There will be some disruption, make no mistake about it, because you're building a home, so you're going to disturb the land. But the amount of land that we're talking about disturbing in terms of putting in new roads, for example, or new infrastructure utilities otherwise, is going to be significantly reduced because it already exists. And it will fit seamlessly within the more than 140 current homes that are in the subdivision. Again, we think that this is simply just an addition, it's a minor addition to an existing subdivision that's already got all the infrastructure in place to support this. Sewers, we talked about sewers a second ago. This is a development that will have sewers. This is not a septic system, this is a sewer system. And the proposed subdivision will utilize and tap into the existing sewer system, thereby, I say eliminating, but for those of us who don't believe that it's 100% accurate, but it could be 99%, I say at least reducing significantly the concerns about septic system capture or impact on the surrounding environment. So, for everyone's benefit, I didn't really highlight it on here, but there's an easement back here on the south side of these proposed lots, and on the east side of these proposed lots, it's a 15-foot easement for sewer purposes. So, the plan, in fact, includes an appropriate easement for sewer extension to be added on to the existing sewer system, and it does, in fact, include the appropriate easement for that benefit, right? So, again, back to that goal I mentioned before, in terms of community facilities, it does have an appropriate easement for the addition of sewers to an already existing sewer system. Lastly, open space. So, again, this is not a true open space development, where you would say 50-plus 1% of the development is either going to be open space of some kind, but you've got at least some open space that's expressly contemplated in this particular design as well. You see down here, I'll call it the foot of the boot on the western part of the proposal. It's about 21,595 square feet, or approximately one-half acre, if my math is right, of land that's going to be in designated undeveloped open space. So, this is, again, part of the proposal, but it is expressly going to be designated, identified, and limited to being open space and will not be, there will not be actual development on this particular parcel right here. So, again, this is a pretty straightforward request. There's not a whole lot more to it on this front, so I want to go ahead and summarize this request for you, and respectfully ask that we give final approval of the preliminary plan to construct the addition of the subdivision without the need, again, for any waivers, any variances, or any zoning map amendments on the basis that the plan comports with the Oldham County subdivision regulations because the plan, among other things, one, adheres to the Oldham County comprehensive plans admonitions to ensure compatibility with other areas. Again, we're talking about designing homes that are going to be adjacent to already existing homes in an already existing subdivision. B, to phase development to meet transportation needs. Again, we're talking about utilizing already existing transportation arteries and subarteries, so we're not talking about creating new roadways, we're not talking about creating massive impact or pressure on existing roadways by only including eight lots. Utilizing sewers to maintain and maintain adequate easements for such purposes where appropriate. So, again, we are utilizing sewers, and as I talked about, there is an appropriate easement that will be incorporated into this design for the purpose of putting in those sewers into these new lots, if approved. And D, identifying and designating open space. So, again, I'm not talking significant amount of open space, I'm not going to try to, I'm not going to try to blow that up more than what it is, but it is, in fact, included in the plan, that there is a specific parcel of land within this proposal that will be designed as open space and will not be developed as part of this concept. Two, it protects the character and social and economic stability of Oldham County, promotes orderly and beneficial development. Again, that's part of the subdivision regulations. Three, it protects and conserves the value of land throughout Oldham County and the value of the buildings and improvements upon the land, and minimizes the conflicts among the uses of land and buildings, right? So, again, we're talking about a design that's already going to fit seamlessly within an existing infrastructure and subdivision that's already there. And four, provides a reasonable design and procedures for subdivision consistent with those uniform procedures and standards by which we have to measure these particular types of requests. It is consistent with the subdivision regulations that the fiscal court has promulgated and that we must follow as part of any consideration. In short, ladies and gentlemen, the proposed addition of this subdivision meets the requirements for approval with no need for any discretionary act. I would invite you all to think that there is, to the best, I would argue, no discretionary act here, and it makes your, makes your duty here a ministerial function, compelling approval. So, in other words, it's pretty straightforward, there really isn't a whole lot for you all to consider in terms of discretion, because, again, it checks all the boxes. There's the case that we cited, you've probably heard this many times here, I've cited it before, but just for your benefit, that's the case, Kentucky, 1975, for your benefit, that sets that standard. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I'm done with my questions. Mr. Hill is also available, by the way, to answer any questions related to anything you might have from a technical perspective, as well as Mr. Johnson, from a, from a landowner-subdivision perspective. With that, Mr. Chairman, I am done with my presentation and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? I'd seen none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application or with questions? All right. Commissioners, questions of applicant? Mr. Allison?
Yes, you talked about the open space. The Technical Review Committee indicated that the open space in the site statistics did not match the open space provided in the plan.
Can you get a little closer to that mic so we can pick you up on the record?
Sure. The Technical Review Committee said the open space in the site statistics does not match the open space provided on the plan. Could you elaborate on that and how that was resolved?
Sure. Mike Hill with Land Design and Development. Yes, that was an error caught by staff on our Technical Review Committee submitted plan. It's been corrected on the plan. You see before you, the data matches the area of the open space.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Allison?
That's it.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Douglas, please.
Maybe the county engineer or you, Mr. Swansburg. Are these roads in the county already in the subdivision? Have they already been disneyed?
Yes, they're county-maintained.
Okay. And you don't see any issues with the roadway, with the new additions, with the?
No, if, if it came up, so, we have received concerns from residents in Paramount Estates before requesting a traffic signal at the current entrance at US-42. However, we also understand now that with the construction of reserves of Paramount, that will connect to this subdivision, and that connects to 42 at where the New Goshen Library is, where there's a traffic signal. So, overall, that's why we don't see any issues or need for traffic studies at this time.
Okay. I do have one follow-up, Mr. Swansburg, I'm sorry. You mentioned the comprehensive plan. Do you see that, and I'm not an attorney, so would LU-1-3 also fit in that category?
If you got a copy of it, I can look it up real quick. I'm always happy to say yes, for the sake of, I haven't memorized the comprehensive plan.
I know you mentioned all the infrastructure, existing infrastructure, so...
So, land use subject of LU-1-3 reads, "Establish development priority areas and provide incentives for compatible development proposals within these areas." It also, LU-1-3-1, "Encourage development to locate in areas with existing infrastructure and services before moving into less developed areas of the county." If that is what you're asking, Commissioner, then yes, I would argue that that also is, that this particular proposal is consistent with that, because it does, it is, in fact, a development proposal that utilizes existing infrastructure and services in a part of the county that's already developed for that purpose, if that's, if that's your question. I would argue, yes, that also does include that, but I also was, to be fair, I was, I was selectively picking a number of them, and I believed to it, but I would submit that's not an entirely exhaustive list. Yes, sir.
Mr. Douglas, anything additional? Okay, other questions? Commissioners? Bobby?
On the sewer easement, we consider, it runs on the back of the five lots, continued it on over to Paramount Way.
Name and address.
Erickson, Land Design Development, 503 Washburn. Right now, there's not a need. This sewer has only served these eight lots. There, if there is sewers, if there's a need for sewers across the street, we'll have to build an additional pump station. I don't think that sewer is low enough to be able to serve that property.
Mr. Klingemfuss, anything additional? All right. Other questions? Commissioners? All right. Oh, thank you, Ms. Nasser.
Follow-up question for Mr. Silliman. Do we have any estimated date or at what point in time that road from the, from this property to the library would connect, that entrance where the light is?
We had a, I believe we had a binding element, or there was a, there was an agreement when the connection would be made. I'd have to look that up for you, unless the developer recalls, because they're involved with that.
Jeff Johnson, Paramount Limited, 1051 Clark Street, Happing, in Virginia. If memory serves correct, Jim, I think that was when the reserve is actually close to 90% built out. The road is already connected, and that was, we worked with Mr. Urban beforehand, and that was one of the elements that we negotiated with the, Mr. Canfield, who purchased the property, that we tried to create duplicity in everything, from the roadways, the residents in Paramount Estates now have two routes, will have two routes, out to a lighted interchange, which is a lot safer. All the utilities are looped now from a protection standpoint, whether it's water, power, gas, all of those. And those were elements that we negotiated with Mr. Canfield in the very beginning. So, thank you.
Ms. Nasser, anything else? Okay. Commissioners, further questions? All right. Mr. Swansburg. Having no opposition testimony, we're into rebuttal and final statement phases for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any rebuttal, of course, that would be completely contrary to my own self-interest. But I do just want to remind everyone again that, for our purposes, in terms of a approval, you know, I talked again for the members who are new here, as well as those who have been through this before, again, what's the guiding standard in terms of an approval of any kind? And I would submit to you that this slide here does set forth that basis for why we would think it's a comfortable approval for you all to make. Again, the regulations provide that, with, again, this is, this is a proposal that does not have the need for any waivers, variances, or zoning map amendments, and it also comports with the subdivision regulations, as I've already highlighted. I won't go through them all again, but again, it does adhere to certain parts of the comprehensive plan that we've talked about in detail. It does protect the character of Oldham County, promotes orderly development. It does protect and conserve the value of land in this part of the county, and it does provide a reasonable design that is consistent with those established standards that we all have to adhere to when we consider these types of proposals. So, I would respectfully ask, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that you all approve this particular request, and with that, I'll yield back any remaining time I might have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. All right. Mr. Fisher.
Sorry about that.
We'll make time.
So, on page two of your staff report, you do have motions to approve and deny the preliminary subdivision that's before you, with the proposed binding elements on page three that include the approval applies only to the plan presented at the September 23, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There should be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission, and the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right. Commissioners, questions? Discussion? If there are none, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Miller.
Motion for approval of the preliminary subdivision plan.
Come closer to that mic, please, sir. There you go.
I'm sorry. There you go. Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
I would motion the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan as outlined by Mr. Fisher in item number one on page two.
We're going to have to go ahead and get more granular on the record here, okay?
Okay. The approval is contingent upon the strict adherence to the binding elements, conditions, and approval listed above, and as the Planning Commission may amend or delete additional binding elements to the public hearing.
All right. And so, did the testimony and evidence that you heard indicate to you that it's in compliance with the, the comprehensive plan and the subdivision regulations?
It did, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baxter, do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
With those additions, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis. Discussion. Move into a roll call vote.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And PZ-25-024, motion for approval is passed on a vote of 13 to 0. All right. Everybody good? Move into the next docket? Okay. Ms. Edgar, can you read the next docket item, please?
Docket PZ-25-026, an application has been filed by Falls City Contracting for a zoning map amendment and development plan on property located at 706 Jericho Road, La Grange. The property is 0.5 acres and currently zoned I-1 light industrial with a proposed zoning of C-N commercial neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and Ms. Barge. Staff's report.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Anna Barge, senior planner. And we're here today to discuss a zoning map amendment and development plan for two single-family homes. So, the existing zoning of this property is I-1 light industrial, and the proposed zoning is C-N commercial neighborhood. The current land use is undeveloped. The current land use is undeveloped and the parcel size is half an acre. So this is just down the road from here, on Jericho Road, less than five minutes away, approximately five minutes from here. This is this corner lot right here. There's a nursing home or residential care facility situated across from Kidwell Lane, residential properties to the south, as well to the north, with an industrial use up to the northeast. So as you can see, the residential care facility is zoned R-4, everything around it on this side of Kidwell Lane, even though there are residential uses, are zoned industrial. We see this sometimes in the city limits of La Grange. Just keep in mind, this property in particular is not in the city limits of La Grange, and I'll show you that in the next slide. To the south, the property is zoned, all the properties down there are zoned R-2A. So I decided to include the city limits map because it's quite interesting, and since this is a zoning map amendment, if recommended today for approval, it will go to the Oldham County Planning, or Oldham County Fiscal Court, rather than the city of La Grange. So everything in blue is La Grange city limits. This is the property with the red star, so it's not in the city limits. Thus, if recommended for approval today, it'll go to the Oldham County Fiscal Court. So there's no site history on this property. The pre-application meeting was on July 3, with a neighborhood meeting on July 17, technical review committee meeting in August. It was posted to the county website on August 29, and the adjoining property owners' notices were mailed on September 2. It appealed, the notice appeal appeared in the Oldham era on September 4, and the sign was posted to the property on September 9. So I have some site photos from when I put the sign out. So here's the corner of the lot with the sign. And this is from across the street on Jericho Road, looking towards the property. This is that shed that's on the property, as you can see on the plan, it's noted to be removed. And this is from across the street on Kidwell. This is the property here. And it ends right along where that carport area and this fence is here. It looks smaller than it is in pictures. Here's another angle looking. This is Kidwell right here, and this is Jericho Road. So for the notes, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from I-1 light industrial to CN Commercial Neighborhood to allow for a proposed two sing, two single-family homes. According to zoning ordinance 140010, the purpose of CN Commercial Neighborhood District is to promote the reuse of structures located in Oldham areas, or urban areas of Oldham County that have been constructed for mixed commercial or residential use, which may be currently underused or vacant, and which are located at street corners or on blocks with a significant number of retail business uses. CN zoning may also be appropriate for new construction where a mixture of business and residential uses is found to conform with the comprehensive plan and to any master plan covering that area. So this is the plan provided, it's in your packet. So this is Jericho Road, and this is Kidwell. Now, the state owns Jericho Road and the county Kidwell. The state specifically recommended, and you'll see this in your TRC notes, that are required that the entrances be off of Kidwell rather than Jericho Road, which is why they have both driveways on Kidwell. And there's going to be one, two single-family residences, so one here and one here. This is the current zoning district and the rules for that. As you'll note, there's 100-foot setback for structures, for the front yard setback. And if we go back, this lot width is less than 100 feet. So just note that this property probably couldn't be used without a variance if it was zoned I-1. So these are the permitted uses in I-1, quite a long list, and then the conditional uses are listed here. So this is the commercial neighborhood zoning, the setback requirements, the lot area, and then these are the permitted uses. So the reason they wanted to do commercial neighborhood was because they want to put two single-family homes, but they're also interested in having the flexibility to use the property as business and professional offices. So like maybe a law firm, maybe a, a tax office or something like that, like a CPA. So in summary, the zoning map amendment, an application has been filed by Falls City Contracting for a zoning map amendment and development plan on property located at 706 Jericho Road in La Grange. The property is half an acre and is currently zoned I-1 light industrial with a proposed zoning of CN Commercial Neighborhood. So the binding elements, these are our standard binding elements, you saw the same in the last case. So the approval applies only to the plan presented at the September 23, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission hearing. There shall be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and Engineers Office. And the plan must comply with all federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements, and comply with all necessary easement restrictions at time of construction plan approval. Second, so that zoning map amendment, you'll be recommending approval to the fiscal court, and then for the development plan, this will be something that you approve yourself. So applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan for two single-family homes. And these have the exact same binding elements on this one, so I won't reread it to you. And that concludes. And one other note, they did address all my comments from TRC. So they did, anything that I requested to be fixed, they did fix those as well.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. Mr. Sillman.
So since these lots are less than an acre, or in total, less than an acre, we would not require they obtain a stormwater quality management and erosion control permit from our office, nor would they be required to get the Kentucky Division of Water KYR-10 permit. However, our concern, it was noted in the TRC notes and, and hearing, was with regard to traffic, because in this case, we're, we're talking about a zoning change to CN. And while the intent is for professional offices, if you zone at CN, does that allow a later user to then utilize with their intent of any of the other uses? And if you look at a restaurant or some other use in the CN, could generate more traffic that would require us to require a traffic assessment or traffic impact study. A coffee shop or a small restaurant could generate a lot of AM or PM peak hour trips. So discussing this with the other staff, we, I think we've resolved that the binding elements that are proposed should address that in the sense that binding element one was, let's see, because the approval applies to the plan today, which shows, clearly shows two single-family residences, and that there will be no changes without review by the Planning Commission or Engineers Office, I think we're comfortable that if that does use or desired use that would generate that traffic comes to us, we have appropriate checks in places to review that and make any comments or requirements at that time. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that discussion or thought process.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sillman. All right, Commissioners, questions of staff? Mr. Douglas?
Ms. Barge? Did the applicant indicate that they were also maybe considering a two-dwelling? Family, two-family dwelling?
No, they're two-single family.
I know, they're single.
Yes.
So do you know what the side yard, since there's no side yard dimensions that are required in CN?
What's?
So there's zero on everything, correct?
So, yeah, and it's a residential district, so the only residential district they really abut would be across the street on the south side.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Douglas, anything else? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marsh, please.
Ms. Barge? The cover sheet says that the total site size is, a lot size is half an acre, but then in the drawing, we've got a .146 and a .119. Are the tracks that it's breaking into worse?
I'm looking at their application. So on their application, they put plus or minus half an acre. So that's why I put that on the cover sheet, because I go off of their application.
Okay.
So I think together, because what their plan is, is if this gets approved, then they'll split the lots, because they don't want to split the lot into two if it doesn't get approved.
Okay.
Because you can't have two houses on one lot in Oldham County.
But is the complete tract actually half an acre, or is it smaller than that?
I would have to double-check on the PVA, but they said plus or minus half an acre. So approximately half an acre.
Well, it's adding up to about a quarter of an acre.
So I can double-check on my computer.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Marsh, anything else?
No, sir.
Ms. Jones?
So there's no side yard setback in the CN, but it says, except when abutting residential district. So the, does that include the residents that are around this? So will it have the side yard setbacks when it's next to a existing home?
So that refers to a residentially zoned district? So those homes are being used residentially in an industrial zoning, but we wouldn't go across the street. So the R-4, I believe, is across the street, the other residential is across the street. So that would only be if the residentially zoned district is abutting the CN. Does that make sense?
So what, what is the, the house beside it on Kidwell? What, what is that zoned? I think I missed that when you had the zoning up there.
There's a lot of places in.
So it's R-4?
Yeah, that's the residential care facility.
So 650 Kidwell Lane, what is that zoned?
Industrial. And it's been zoned industrial for a long time. Our GIS manager and one of the planners and I were looking at the book just this week, or maybe it was last week, I think it was last week, to confirm how long this area's been zoned industrial. And it's been that way for decades, maybe forever. It's kind of hard to tell, because people just mark things out in the book. Back in the day, that's how it was done. And so sometimes it's hard to tell. And I mean, it would be great if the city of La Grange could initiate, you know, rezoning for the residential used areas, because we have a lot of residential used areas that are zoned industrial in downtown La Grange that are on small lots. Also, to answer your question, Mr. Marsh, so the property in the PVA is zoned half an acre, and something that Mr. Sillman brought up is they're donating so much right-of-way for, because it's a corner lot, that's why it gets reduced in the acreage. So if you look on the south side of the plan, or on the side, the corner of the plan, let me see where I put it. It's back here. So if you.
So the 30-foot right-of-way along Kidwell, that, that area?
Yeah.
Would be right-of-way?
Yeah, so that's why it's taking so much land away from them, is because they're on that corner lot. Yeah, that right-of-way. You're welcome, that's a good question.
All right, Commissioners, further questions? Mr. Hampton?
In the notes where the applicant is seeking zoning map amendment from light industrial to la, proposed two single-family homes, but then in number two, it goes on to say that it can be used for other stuff. I'm a little confused on that. So if we approve this, is it two single-family homes? That's it? Or can they do something else already built into this proposal?
So. Go ahead.
So I mean, anytime you do a zoning change, they can use it for whatever. Now, however, we are approving the development plan with the two single-family homes. So if they make any changes, we would have to review that. And you know, one of the concerns is, so say they don't build these two single-family homes, or they do, and they put a coffee shop in there, well, obviously, coffee shops generate a lot more traffic than two single-family homes that are used residentially. So our office would need to review those, because at that stage, you know, if Starbucks wanted to put a coffee shop in there, then they would have to, you know, do a traffic study most likely, or we'd have to evaluate if they would be required to. So if they decide not move forward with those two single-family homes, then we would have to, and something else wanted to go there, we would have to review that further.
Okay, it just seems a little open-ended. Thank you.
Yeah.
Also, I just want to note, I mean, because Jim brought up, you know, the potential for a restaurant, Anna just talked about a potential for a coffee shop. The one thing you're going to find on that lot is they're going to have trouble doing parking for any of those types of uses. So if and, if and when that ever does happen, I mean, the catch-all binding element is it only applies to the plans presented today, which they've talked about, two single-family homes, potential for maybe a professional office of some sort, a tax office where you might have one vehicle coming in for an appointment at a time, maybe, you know, one person in the office working, or one staff person. A restaurant and a coffee shop are probably never going to be able to work on this lot because of the sheer number of parking spots that our current regulations require them to have for that type of use. But once again, I think that catch-all provides us the ability to, when somebody comes in to do a change of use permit and get a building permit, to try to turn this into a restaurant, that that's going to get flagged to go, wait a second, I think you need to talk to planning, and we look at this case and go, no, the case was talked about, two offices, and it would have to come back here whenever, or if that ever happened.
Keep going.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, so if they decided, whether one of them or both of them is not going to be a single-family home, and it's going to be a CPA office, they would have to come back to, they would have to come back to you all?
To us, yes.
Okay. I just want to be sure.
Yeah. And alternatively, like if they want to use this lot residentially, their options are to do what they're doing today, or to do a residential use waiver in industrial, which y'all have seen before. However, they would have to ask for setback variances, because there's no way they could meet the 100-foot setback variance in industrial. So those are your two options when you have a lot that isn't in a residential area but zoned industrial.
And just keep in mind, you all have heard several cases within the last year of people coming before you all and asking for a waiver of residential use in industrial-zoned property, because as zoning was developed in, in Oldham County, they took industrial zoning and put it along the railroad tracks, because the thought was railroad tracks, we're going to see industrial-used properties. What you all have seen, and even from this aerial image shows, is that you've got residentially used properties in industrial-zoned areas. And we've had, I know of at least two cases that we brought before you all. We just had one the other day in a commercially zoned area, but we've had one previously in, in industrial-zoned area, in this same general area, to ask for the waiver. And so we do try to talk about, you know, hey, a zoning change would be much more appropriate, but usually the applicant goes, well, I don't want to do a six-month process of a zoning change, I'd rather just go and ask for the waiver. So this does make it a little cleaner, it makes it a, a better zoning, even though we do have that fear that once you change the zoning, you could have all these other things pop up. But I think the catch-all binding element means they're going to have to come to us at some point. Now, the professional office may not generate trips to bring it back to you all, but they would at least have to go through our office to look at a site plan review or something of that nature.
Thank you.
All right, further questions? Mr. Allen?
Just a question for the Commission. The number, bullet point number one under proposed binding elements, the approval applies only to the plan presented here at this meeting. Does that cover what we're talking about, that since the plan presented is for two single-family homes, this binding element covers that risk of changing their mind down the road and putting something else in there? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And keep in mind, the binding elements go with the development plan. So the binding elements don't necessarily go with the zoning change. You all are going to recommend approval or denial of the zoning change to the legislative body. The binding elements are stuck with the development plan, so their development plan is proposing two single-family homes at, at this time.
Thank you. All right, further questions, Commissioners? All right, with that, we'll move into presentation from applicant.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
My name is Neil Salier. I'm here with Vallee Shannon as well, from Bramall Law, 401 West Jefferson Street, La Grange, Kentucky, 40031. Also with us is Stephen Lesko, he's one of the members of Falls City Contracting. If you guys would like to go ahead and swear him in while I get our presentation ready?
Thank you.
Ms. Rayhan, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Before I get started, I want to thank Ms. Barge, and thank you all for the questions that have already been raised. We knew, coming into this morning, the request for a CN zoning change was going to raise some questions based on the fact of how this property can be used.
based on the fact of how this property can be used. I do want to reiterate, before we even get started, our goal today, Fall City Contracting's goal today, is to, if approved for the zoning change, subdivide this into two lots and put two single-family homes on it to be used as single-family residences. So we understand the restrictions that would come with that approval, that that approval is here, and the approval comes only with what is being proposed today. And that is absolutely what our goal is. So we are more than willing to answer any more questions that may come along with that at the end of the presentation. So again, the petitioner here is Fall City Contracting LLC. They own the property at 706 Jericho Road. It's already been laid out that this, this here in the red is the property in question. It is vacant, and it is currently zoned I-1 light industrial. The requested change, again, is to commercial neighborhood. We want to break this parcel, or my clients would like to break this parcel into two separate properties and provide single-family homes on each of them. Y'all have already seen this. This is the map of the proposed plat. The agenda that I'm going to go through is going to be relatively quick today, hopefully, and answer the questions that you might have. We'll talk about the current zoning, what it looks like in the area, the requested zoning change, justifications, a couple of construction examples of single-family homes that my clients have built in the area, as well as one that is just an architectural, architectural drawing, and then the conclusion for what it is that we're asking for. If y'all will excuse me, I think I'm fighting the same bug that Mr. Swansburg might have been. So we'll try to keep the ums and ahs to a minimum. So here is just a snapshot, again, showing that this property that we're in, or that we have purchased, really sits in a, a buffer zone between industrial to the north, up towards the railroad tracks and to the east, and then residential all through the south, coming back into the city of La Grange. If we look at it as a buffer zone, it makes sense that CN would be an appropriate zoning designation for it and allow for these single-family homes to be built that would be right across the road from Jericho. But again, in the future, provide the flexibility to come back before the county to make changes should the, should there be, be a need or a want for a professional office of some kind. You'll see here, again, we have Jericho Road running up and down on the plat. Kidwell Lane is here. And again, I believe as Ms. Barge stated, the state, which owns Jericho, prohibited any kind of driveway access off of Jericho. So we do have driveways on each side here, coming off of Kidwell and going to the single-family homes. We have the, in this, the, the setback that's needed off of Kidwell, the easement in the back for sewer. I believe that addressed most of the questions and concerns that were raised in the technical review committee with regard to the plat itself. So the current zoning, as you all have heard, is I-1 light industrial. Again, that is intended for commercial storage, manufacturing, things like warehouses, vehicular repair, retail centers, contractor storage, funeral homes and mortuaries. The type of structures that can be built in a light industrial zone are not really compatible with this small piece of property that we're talking about. Major front yard setbacks, major side yard setbacks that this half-acre property just simply would not allow. Now, the proposal to CN, commercial neighborhood, it's designed, CN is designed to promote small-scale, small-scale, mixed business and residential uses. Section 140-010 explicitly states that CN zoning may also be appropriate for new construction where a mixture of business and residential use is found to conform with the comprehensive plan and to any master plan covering the area. I apologize. Again, permitted uses, single-family, two-family, or multifamily dwellings. And again, business and professional offices in the event that we were to come back and ask for that down the road. Again, to be clear to the Commission, that is not today's goal. Today's goal is to build, if approved, two single-family units to be used as single-family dwellings. The development scale for CN, smaller lots, lower building heights, and more modest land coverage than what industrial will allow for. I wonder how this looks online with all the lots flickering?
We're going to bust out the strobes to see if we can break the focus.
I'm telling you. Compatibility benefits, what is important to, to this Commission and to the county. Again, I mentioned earlier, but we have a natural transition zone between residential and a heavier industrial area. It really is in that buffer zone that would allow for residential or a commercial use if, if applied for. Again, neighborhood scale with low-impact businesses include, you know, law offices, real estate offices, accounting offices, things like that. Would generate a different level of traffic, a much lighter traffic, as opposed to heavy industry where you have semis coming in, where you have rollbacks coming in to drop off vehicles, to be worked on, things like that. Again, CN does provide for flexibility. Again, to be clear, that flexibility, we understand the owner will have to come back and request should, if they want to change from, you know, the, the residential use to a low-impact business. Now, here are a couple of examples of structures that may go on this property. To the left, you see an already-built home. That was, that was built here in Oldham County by our clients.
What's the address of that?
Monroe, on Monroe, 800 Monroe. To the right, you see an architectural rendering. The reason we added that in is because a determination has not been made yet by our clients, again, should approval happen, as to whether they want to include an attached garage or not to these, to these properties or to these homes. But you'll see here, a, a basic understanding of a 1,200 to 1,400 or 1,500 square-foot single-family home. Again, we believe our proposal aligns with county goals. The ordinance's intent is to ensure that the most appropriate use of land and structures throughout the county, and we want to avoid undue land use conflicts. Again, we're in a buffer zone here. This property that sits right in the middle of industrial use, actually industrial zone that has been used for residential, as well as residential around it. If we had panned out that map a little bit, directly back to the southwest is downtown La Grange. There's more residential, more industrial, and there's actually some CN there in, in the city as well. CN zoning is explicitly recognized as appropriate. Quote, "Where a mixture of business and residential use is found to conform with the comprehensive plan." Our request matches the planned orderly growth by protecting the surrounding residents from incompatible, incompatible industrial activities. Again, rather than putting some type of light industry there, which is right across the street from a residential area, right, right across Jericho Road from residential area, these will be single-family homes. Again, it will match the county's goals in this area. In closing, we see CN zoning here as a common-sense solution for this vacant property. It allows homes or neighborhood service, neighborhood-serving offices. It maintains residential character, which we see directly to the south, and it provides a buffer. Again, it sits right in that sweet spot between residential and industrial use. And we believe that this CN rezone provides a, a good buffer for this area. So we respectfully request approval of the rezoning to CN for the highest and best use of this property. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Salyer. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application or with questions about this application? All right, Commissioners, you're up, questions? Ms. Jones.
I'm still a little concerned about the setbacks next to the, because there are, even though it's zoned, commercial, you know, along Kidwell, there are, you know, single-family homes. So, and if, is it showing that you, that there, it will be a setback between the home on Kidwell, even though it's not required? Is that something we could put as a binding element? Because if this is miss, I mean, if it shouldn't be zoned industrial, should we have a setback with the home, even though it's not required? So it doesn't sit up two foot next to the home, next door to it?
So that is something that you're able to request as part of the binding elements?
Okay, can, can you tell me on this, on this here? I mean, is that showing that there is an appropriate setback from the home?
And we're not going to capture you on the record unless you're over here, so, okay?
And Ms. Jones, just to, just, just to confirm, you're talking about the, this would be the north piece of property, if broken into two, and the setback, the side yard setback from the farthest north boundary, is that accurate?
Correct.
Again, get, everything to the north is zoned industrial. So I don't, I'm not sure I understand if the, if the question is, would there be a setback? Right now, there is proposed a setback of approximately 17 feet.
Okay.
That's the current proposal based on the, the proposed plat that you have in front of you.
Okay, so that, and that could not be changed without coming back with a new plan? Is that correct, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
This, again, this is the proposed plan today that we're asking for approval on. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I think I took a long way around to get into your answer. I apologize.
Ms. Jones, you good? Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Salyer.
Yes, sir.
In a short version, tell me the justification for changing the zoning map amendment, again.
Well, as of now, given the size of the lot itself, it can't meet the industrial setbacks, or, excuse me, it can't meet the setback requirements. We would have to ask for waivers to be able to do anything relating to, well, we'd ask, we'd have to ask for waivers to be able to do anything relating to anything that we wanted to do on the property, given the size of it. So the, the CN, again, allows a little bit more flexibility in a zoning change than us having to come and, and ask for waivers to be able to build the similar type, single-family homes on this property.
So the current zoning doesn't have the current setbacks currently?
The, the, the setback requirements in the current industrial zoning would essentially eliminate the whole, any kind of use for the property in a, in, in any kind of setting, whether residential, commercial, industrial, whatever it may be.
Thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Nasser.
Right here.
Sorry.
That's okay. Why commercial versus residential? If you're going to change zoning and you're using it for residential purposes?
Why commercial versus, you mean, why CN versus straight residential? Again, we felt like the, the potential flexibility that might arise there, given where this property is located in this buffer between all industrial to one-half of, of what it surround, or is what is surrounding it versus one-half residential to the rest. It, it, it just made sense based on that, that this could be a good buffer zone and would allow, again, the goal is to, to put residential homes there. But who knows what the, in, in 15, 20 years, whatever it may be, who knows what the need might be for the area?
All right, Commissioners, anything else? Mr. Salyer, one question from me.
Yes, sir.
Your justification statement includes a reference to the objective LU2-1 out of the comprehensive plan. Would you like to enter that into your record as well?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Further questions, guys? All right. Mr. Salyer, ball's back in your court now. Having no opposition testimony, there will be no need for rebuttal. We're moving into your final statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commission. Ms. Barge, thank you again for answering the questions before I even started. I know this one is relatively a, a unique request, given that it does allow, if approved, for two different kinds of, of uses in this area. We would just request that the Commission look at this as a request and a zoning change that would allow for the highest and best use of this property. It does allow for unlimited flexibility for what these single-family homes could be used for throughout the lot. Again, completely understanding and being transparent that we do understand that the approval, if given, is for, A, a zoning change, B, a subdivision into two lots to build single-family homes to be used as single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Fisher.
All right, a couple of things first on, on the binding elements, because we have heard some evidence and testimony and questions from, from the Planning Commission. About two additional ones that maybe look at, at adding in here. And obviously, this would be something the applicant would have to, to agree with. So we've got our three current proposed binding elements that are on, in your staff packet there on page three. Two others that I think should be added would be, number four, a minor plat shall be submitted and approved at staff level to create proposed tracks A and B prior to applying for all necessary building and electrical permits. I'll get you these. So that would be one. That's usually a standard one when any sort of, of split has to take places, that that has to occur. And then the other one, based on some of the questions about the setback, is it does appear the plans are showing, you know, around a 16-foot setback. But if it would make the Planning Commission feel any better to put a binding element that would say, "There shall be a minimum seven-foot side yard setback to the 650 Kidwell Lane property." That would mimic what we see in other residential zonings on a side setback. So we could say that would be the minimum, that nothing could be entertained over that. Or we could keep that one out and just say the plans here show a 16-foot, and call it good. But I don't-
All right, Commissioners first. Choice between the as presented or seven feet. Mr. Douglas?
I have a- A clarification. So we're putting these additional binding elements in the preliminary development, or the developmental plan? Because it wouldn't go into zoning amendment plan, correct?
Mr. Douglas, they always want to talk about them at fiscal court.
I know they do.
So that's why I just thought out of an abundance of caution, we'd put them in here. So they're, they're going to want to talk about it, so.
Okay, so they're going to go in both, the binding and?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, further questions, Commissioners, input? Mr. Marsh?
What was the answer to that question?
What was the answer to that question? Are we going to go with seven?
Seven or as drawn, right?
Okay.
So, I mean, currently, the first binding element is that the approval applies only to the plan presented at the September 23 meeting. Their plans appear to have a 16-foot setback to that property on Kidwell. We could put something in there that would say, the minimum would be seven, but I don't, maybe they want to discuss this.
We, if, if, if the Commission has done minimum side setbacks of seven feet for the properties, that would allow us more flexibility as my client determines what the homes would look like on this property. We would frankly love the, the flexibility to, to have and be willing to include a seven-foot setback requirement.
I would ask that we write that binding element as seven foot.
Seven feet. Mr. Douglas?
Are we talking about the side yard, or are we talking about the?
Side yard.
Between the two buildings?
Yeah. Not between the two buildings, from the property line to the?
To the 650 Kidwell Lane property, if you look at your, your map.
If you look at the CN, because all this property is zoned industrial?
Right.
The setback is zero.
Well, there's a proposed 30-foot right away already from Kidwell.
Well, we're talking about?
From the building itself.
It's the front.
This side yard between there and the adjoining property. Existing over here?
Yep.
And currently, it's drawn at the minimum 16.4 in the back of the structure.
To further clarify, the 30-foot that you had mentioned, it would be, I guess, the, the front of the property. We're talking about side setbacks here.
All right, so unless I'm mistaken, we appear to have settled on seven. Please speak now if that is not your conclusion. All right? Okay, so we're at seven.
Okay. So back to me now. So we'll have two motions on this case. The first one we'll take is the zoning map amendment. So on page two, going into page three of your staff report, you have suggested motions to either recommend approval or recommend denial to Oldham County Fiscal Court for that zoning map amendment. You've heard evidence and testimony from, from the applicant. You've heard a staff report talking about objectives. They mentioned land use objective from the comp plan. So take that into account in your motion, and then those will include the five proposed binding elements we have, which include, the approval applies only to the plan presented at the September 23, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. Shall be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and Engineers Office. The plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements, and comply with all necessary easement restrictions at the time of construction plan approval. A minor plat shall be submitted and approved at staff level to create proposed tracks A and B prior to applying for all necessary permits. And number five, there shall be a minimum seven-foot side yard setback to the 650 Kidwell Lane property.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, you all agree with the five proposed binding elements? I think we got to that point, just for the records purposes, that there's an agreement with those proposed binding elements.
Can you verbalize that? Thank you. All right. All right, Commissioners, questions? The floor is open. This is a recommendation to Oldham Fiscal Court for the zoning change. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Marsh?
In regards to docket PZ 25-026, I move that we approve the request for a zoning map amendment as it complies with objectives listed in LU dash two dash one of the comprehensive plan. There are physical aspects associated with this particular lot and location that were not anticipated by the comprehensive plan, and those unique characteristics of that location, such as parking setbacks, justify this. I also would like to propose the binding elements, one through five, as we just started, adding four as the minor plat statement, and five as the minimum seven-foot side yard setback.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Mr. Baxter?
Chairman, may I? Mr. Marsh, do you incorporate, or is the basis for your motion is based upon the sworn testimony you've heard here today?
Correct.
And you said you, your motion was to approve the zoning map amendment, that it's actually to recommend a zoning map amendment to the Oldham Fiscal Court?
Yes, sir.
With those additions, are you? Are you okay?
Yes, sir, I am 100% behind you.
And we have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Davis has the second. All right. Discussion? Okay, we'll move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Jones? Yes. Ms. Davis? Ms. Kraus? Ms. Nasser? Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Did she say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Miller? I mean, Mr. Miller, sorry. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton? Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
How do you know I was going to say? Mr. Allison?
All right, thank you, Ms. Edgar. And PZ dash 25 dash 026 zoning map recommendation for approval to fiscal court is passed on a vote of 12 to 1. Mr. Fisher?
All right, the second motion before you will be the preliminary development plan for the plans that have been presented to you today on page three. Once again, you have motions to approve or deny the preliminary plan that's before you for those two single family homes. You've heard evidence and testimony again, and these will also include the same five proposed binding elements that you just heard for the zoning map amendment. I would read them to you, but I've already torn my sheet of paper off and gave them to Ms. Edgar, so I don't know if I have to read those in their entirety again.
As previously stated. All right, Commissioners, questions? Floor is open for a motion. This is on the development plan. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Marsh?
In regards to docket PZ 25-026, I move to approve the preliminary plan as it complies with the objectives in LU two dash one of the comprehensive plan. The testimony today supports that plan, and I also requested it approve, include the five binding elements as previously stated.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Mr. Baxter?
You have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Cass? Ms. Nasser, thank you. Roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And PZ dash 25 dash 026 development plan has been approved on a vote of 12 to 1. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, he's got to get up and give the presentation. Everybody good? Keep pushing forward. Ms. Jones, yes? We've got five, yeah, we'll take five.
Session, here we go. All right, thank you. How long we rolling again? I'm not convinced we're on record yet. Here we go. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that indulgence. We'll come back into open hearing. Ms. Edgar, can you read the next docket item, please?
Docket PZ-25-027. An application has been filed by Stephanie Howard requesting a waiver to encroach into the limits of non-disturbance on property located at the 12507 Poplar Woods Drive, Goshen. The property is .67 acres in zoned CO-1 Conservation District.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And Mr. Fisher?
All right, they've called in the relief pitchers. So Ryan Fisher, Director, Oldham County Planning. We'll see if I remember how to do this. So this one is a little different, so that's why I wanted to come up here. And we're actually going to go old school. There's not going to be a PowerPoint presentation for you. I'm just going to go over a few brief points of the staff report, and then I'm going to show about two or three overheads. Go old school, like my history professor at Bellarmine back in 1994 used to do. So we're just going to go that route. So before you today is a waiver to encroach in the limits of non-disturbance. So this is a different one for you. At 12507 Poplar Woods Drive. And so on December 12, 2006, and you see this here in your site history on page one, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a preliminary subdivision plan for the Poplar Woods subdivision out off Highway 42. It is an open space subdivision. You heard Mike Swansburg talk about that earlier, but this is a true open space subdivision. And on that record plat, and if they want to switch over to the overhead, on the record plat that was approved and recorded back on September 16, 2008, it shows a 40-foot limit of disturbance behind lots 44 to 48 and lots 50 to 55. So that's definitely kind of hard to see on the overhead, but you do have that in your staff report. At least, I hope so. You should have that in, yeah, you do have that in your staff report. That shows that 40-foot limits of disturbance. Jim Solomon will talk a little bit from the county engineer perspective of why that was put in there. But in doing so, it limits any type of disturbance in that area behind those lots. And so the applicant lives in one of those lots there, Lot 53, as you can see on your maps that have been provided. They are proposing to build a 14-by-35-foot, 490-square-foot in-ground swimming pool in the backyard of their residence. This was also included in your staff packet, just showing the proposed location of that in-ground swimming pool. In placing the pool, it will encroach into that recorded limit of disturbance on the rear of the property. They did go before their HOA. Also included in your staff packet, the Poplar Woods HOA has approved the pool, associated retaining wall and associated landscaping and fencing. The approval also notes a variance being granted for the pool being placed within the sidelines of the house, and was granted due to unique and extenuating circumstances, specifically that 40-foot limit of disturbance. So essentially, the applicant is asking for the planning commission to approve their waiver to encroach into that limit of disturbance. The HOA has already approved that. And the potential conditions of approval on that would simply be that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the September 23, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. That, I think that's all I can provide you on this.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Solomon, do you have something to add?
So this actually originated in my office, and engineering staff inspected the property. And as Mr. Fisher said, that I would speak to the why of this a little bit more. As he mentioned, in 2006, the TRC and Planning Commission, when this subdivision was being reviewed for approval, there was concern about steep slopes in this vicinity. I think maybe 12 lots, but the record plat that you had shows that 40-foot disturbance. And that was created specifically, if you read the minutes from that planning commission hearing, it was specifically created to address the concerns with steep slopes. So that was our reasoning for requiring the waiver, because it's something that's not typical. We don't require it on record plats or in subdivisions. It was specifically for the topography. Now, we have received the plan from the applicant, and I think the pool construction does not seem to impact that concern of erosion, because they will include a retaining wall and features to address that. So again, the intent here was to follow the procedure that was, I guess, established by the establishment of that 40-foot disturbance limit, and make sure this goes through the proper approvals. And again, as far as the plan that's been shown, it does appear acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman, if I can comment as well. Mr. Solomon and Mr. Fisher reached out to me about this question, about whether or not it was appropriate for the planning commission to hear this, or if this was a matter that ought to be addressed maybe by the Board of Adjustments. Because I think it was considered when the subdivision was previously approved, and because Section 5.9 of the subdivision regulation sets out the standards for environmentally sensitive areas, and specifically indicates that it is a matter to be considered by the commission, that's why this application is here instead of going to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. All right, anything else from staff? All right, commissioners, questions of staff? Mr. Hampton?
This area disturbance, how far does this go into it?
If you look on the plan that was included in your packet, that was submitted by the applicant. Based on the scale of the drawing and the dimensions that are shown, I would say, they show that four-foot concrete around the pool that gets into it. So the concrete wall, the retaining wall they show, appears to be six or seven feet into that. Into the no-disturb limit area.
I can't, my poor eyes can't read that, so.
Even on the 11-by-17, it's small text. So it appears to be encroaching about six or seven feet. Now, what this will also require, when, if this is approved by the planning commission, they will have to submit a pool construction permit application, and it'll include a similar drawing with necessary details to the building department.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hampton, anything else? Okay, anyone else? Questions, commissioners? Mr. Douglas?
So how much additional disturbance will they make to the 40-foot during construction for, I guess, infill?
That's not shown, and that's a construction issue that, sure, is there additional limits of disturbance or disturbance created by construction itself?
So is there a requirement they have?
It's not labeled or detailed.
Will they be required to?
There would be some restoration required, correct.
As back to where it was, or? Do we have an idea what, where the slopes start near this property?
Somewhere in that 40-foot area, yes. I mean, it's without the contour shown on here. And right now, if I recall correctly, a lot of the, like, understory was protected with pine straw and other material right now. So it should be graded back to the existing slopes. And it doesn't, a lot of those areas, they might not grow grass so well because of the tree cover, right, the limited sun. So that's why this was established, understanding these erosion issues. But again, the proposed construction doesn't appear to affect that erosion issue, and they would be required to restore it after construction.
Will they have to be required to do additional drainage underneath the pool to allow that runoff to go down into that disturbance area? Since they're building a retaining wall, how is that retaining wall going to stay there?
That would typically be provided with their building permit drawings, whether weepoles or underdrains are required for that size of structure, because it doesn't indicate the height. And a lot of times, that's dependent on the height of the structure, but that would be determined at a later date. So they are required to provide a structure that's sound and will stay.
Was there any, with staff, was there any other additional comments made to the applicant regarding a different-sized pool to stay out of the 40-foot? Or we're just taking, what, 14-by-35?
I think we were reviewing their proposal as.
As presented?
As presented.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Kraus?
So I see a blue line, and it's designated proposed fence, but it says concrete wall. Does that start right there at the edge of the concrete deck around the pool and go to the other end of the pool? Or does, where's exactly is that?
Right, so the blue line encompasses that whole area, and of course, the fencing is a requirement of the.
Right.
Pool construction before, when that permit is applied for and approved, the applicant provides a $500 refundable deposit. And if, not until that fences is provided for the safety reasons, is that $500 deposit returned.
Okay, but does the concrete go all the way across the back, or does it just start where the concrete deck is around the pool and where the?
What's shown on the drawing, that concrete wall is just around the pool perimeter, right?
Okay.
At the deck perimeter, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Solomon. Next up, we'll move into presentation from applicant. Let's go ahead and get you sworn, get your names and addresses, and we'll get out of the gate here, okay?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the method truth? Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for your time today. So my name's Nathan Howard, 12507 Poplar Woods Drive, in the Poplar Woods subdivision in Goshen. And so we started this process, I guess, first of all, just requesting the approval of the waiver to encroach into the 40-foot limit of disturbance is what we're seeking today. So we started this process several months ago, so working first with our HOA, going through this criteria and the step-by-step process that they require. And obviously, the first piece of that was obtaining a property survey. And at that point is when we realized that we have this, we were told that we had this 40-foot limit of disturbance that does start on the rear of our property, come up into our backyard, actually into our lawn. So we worked with the pool company, worked in collaboration very closely with our HOA to determine a placement of the pool that would be best from a utility perspective, but then also meet the requirements of our HOA. And then, thirdly, minimize any disruption at all into this limit of disturbance area. So we've determined that the placement that we've proposed here is the best possible approach for all three of those requirements. And so that's what we're seeking today, is approval for that waiver. Happy to take any questions that you may have regarding the process, but I do thank you all, and thank the county's department for helping us navigate this process, because this is something that we obviously are not accustomed to. So we do appreciate the guidance and the navigation throughout the entire process, because this is a unique case. Happy to take any questions.
All right, we'll get right to that, okay? A little protocol here, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Again, seeing none, commissioners, questions? Mr. Douglas?
I'm going to need a little more. So what would be the undue hardship if you couldn't build a pool here?
Would be the undue hardship?
Yeah, because we're asking, you're asking for a waiver.
Yes.
So we have to have a criteria for undue hardship. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to help.
Sure. So for us, there is no other location within our property where this would be feasible. So we can't do the side yard of our house, where we do have some land, but we just wouldn't meet the criteria of our HOA, which requires sightline. And then behind the house, if we chose another area or another direction of the pool, it would encroach into that limit of disturbance much more significantly. So this is our opportunity to minimize that by a few feet, is the request here. And also failed to mention, too, that we will be working with, we've already contracted a, are working on contracting a professional landscaping company that's going to do all of the bushes, the trees, et cetera, to help minimize any sort of erosion and conservation for the area. You mentioned the retaining wall as well, that's obviously part of our plans, and that will also help minimize any risk there.
Good?
My name.
All right. Mr. Howard, if I may, guys, Mr. Solomon stated earlier that the proposed project does not seem to negatively impact the intent of the setback that's shown. Do you agree with that?
I do, I do.
Thank you. All right, further questions, Mr. Marsh?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baxter, would it be appropriate for a condition of approval to add a reference to the HOA letter and compliance with the HOA letter?
Certainly. All right, further questions, commissioners? All right, Mr. Howard, any final statement?
No, I think that I appreciate your time today and request the approval of that waiver, and will abide by any restrictions that you apply to that. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Fisher?
So on page two of your staff report, you do have suggested motions to approve or deny the waiver. Once again, you've heard evidence from the applicant. You've heard testimony from Jim Solomon, the county engineer, talking about the topographic conditions in the rear of that property, as well as the reasons for the original creation of this non-disturbance area. You've also seen, and I know Mr. Marsh just alluded to that, the letter from the HOA as well. And this does include a potential conditions of approval, that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the September 23, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. And I don't know if he wanted to add that in as a potential condition of approval, or the HOA letter would just be evidence and testimony referenced in the motion.
I think the motioner can make that decision within their motion, okay?
Okay.
All right, commissioners, questions? Discussion, Mr. Douglas?
One for Mr. Fisher. Generally, when we make a waiver for, I know this is for waiver of just a 40-foot limit of disturbance on Lot 53, but sometimes when we make a waiver for limits, we have, like, not to exceed more than so many feet, or they're exceeding more into the feet of this disturbance. So it's just kind of an open end, that they can go into the 40-foot easement, 40-foot. I mean, that kind of like leads it to where they could go through the whole 40-foot if they.
Similar to the previous hearing, are we not approving this based on the plan that's provided?
Well, we are, but I think you have, there was a question raised about maybe a temporary area of disturbance for construction purposes.
I think as long as that area is restored appropriately, that.
And that's based on?
That you look at the permanent impact at this time.
So that's based on the final approval of the permit for?
Correct. Correct. Again, understanding typically to dig a trench.
Things that are achievable.
Yes.
Within the scope of what's presented, to restore that within the intent of that original setback. Right? So is that getting you any closer?
If you'll confirm also, I think the intent is also, or understanding is that you're not impacting the live trees there.
That, yes, that's correct. Yep. We're actually adding trees into the landscaping as well.
So my point of that question is there are physical features there, like trees, that prevent them from going too far?
Good. Okay, further questions? All right, guys, floor is open for a motion. This is for a waiver. Ms. Nasser, is that you?
Yep. I make a motion to approve docket PZ-25-027 for the waiver of a 40-foot, of the 40-foot limit of disturbance on Lot Number 53, due to the unique characteristics of the lot and the restrictions of this disturbance area, and the compliance or the approval of the HOA and the unique restrictions that the HOA guidelines would limit this use of the property. I make a motion to approve this, because it does not also negatively impact the surrounding neighbors as well.
Thank you, Ms. Nasser. Mr. Baxter?
I would also like to include the binding element, number one.
Thank you.
That's based upon the testimony you've heard today from staff and from the applicant?
Absolutely, as well as what was presented today.
We have a good motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Mr. Hampton, thank you. Discussion. We'll move into a roll call vote.
Ms. Graham? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and PZ-25-027 has been approved on a vote of 13 to 0. All right. Mr. Fisher?
All right, I have several announcements today, but I don't feel too bad, since this is one of our shorter meetings in a while, so I don't feel taking up five more minutes of your time is going to be too awful bad. So a couple of things for the SRC members. Don't forget, we have an SRC meeting on Thursday night. We'll be going over the proposed changes that the task force group for the data center regs has proposed. So we'll go over those and see if you all are willing to accept those or not, or, and hopefully push that to the full planning commission next month. Yes? Yes?
Thursday night, don't you mean next Thursday night?
No, I think I mean this Thursday.
I've got it for this Thursday.
Okay, good. Now I don't feel so bad. Yeah, I think it should be the fourth Thursday of the month, and maybe the, yeah. Well, hopefully, we'll see you. With that, I hope you all saw the special meeting that we've called for October 9th for the Planning Commission. Hopefully, most of you all can attend. We will just be doing the comprehensive plan, that meeting. For those of you who have picked up the document, you know it's fairly large, so we did not want to tack that on with any other Planning Commission agenda items, especially maybe the data center regs that might be coming towards you all in the next couple of months. So we will just hear that on the October 9th Planning Commission hearing. We'll have our same October 28 regular meeting, so that's not a Halloween joke. We will meet twice next month. But hey, double the pay, right? The other thing, you all have been provided, I believe, today, new copies of KRS 100. There's been some changes in that. The most notable one is the training requirements for, that you all will have to meet. There's some other changes in there, though. They've reformatted a few things. So what you'll simply do with that is take it home, find that white binder that was given to you all back when you got on the Planning Commission, if you all can find that thing, and just plop it in there in the old KRS 100 spot and review it and look at it whenever you feel free. But essentially, if you did see the new training form I provided to you all the other day with a lot of suggested options on there for you to do for training, you'll see where they've kind of changed the training requirements to you all used to have to get eight hours every two years. Now, right out of the gate, initially, you have to get four hours of required training, which is a little bit more than before right out of the gate. And so typically, we'll do the hour and a half or two hours orientation training with you all when you get on. One of those hours now, though, has to be in something housing-related, housing supply, housing availability. So that document I sent you's got a lot of different options on there for housing, supply, and availability training that you all could potentially do. And then, for those of you all who have been on the commission a while, you all used to have to get that eight hours every two years. You now have to get that eight hours every four years. So they made that a little bit less stringent on you. They didn't make it on us as staff. We have to get a bunch more than that. But, yeah, so you all have to get eight hours every four years. Once again, if you all do training on your own, watching those YouTube videos, things like that, there's a lot of different links on there for you to go to. Just submit that information to us. We've created a form for you to make that easily, where you can just send it back to us. I know Ms. Davis typically does some training in her career that she brings before the commission. If you all do any training like that, we still have to bring that before the commission to get you all to vote to approve that. But just know those training requirements have changed a little bit. That's the main change in KRS, which prompted us to kind of get you all a new copy of that. And then the last thing is, we've been the subject of hackers lately who have been going on our website for the meeting agendas, who will find people's information, email addresses, their information, and send them fake invoices on behalf of Oldham County to pay them some crazy amount of money, $4,371, or gift cards, which people are still falling for that today. But they will send invoices, and some of them look pretty realistic. And so I just, I want to note on the air for whoever's watching this or whatever, is that we will never send an invoice like that. Almost all of the time, we take that money upfront when they apply. But also, just for you all to know, that some of our applications that we will now put on the website, if you go to those links, we are going to start redacting some information off of those to prevent these people from finding email addresses. So just know that if you see things redacted on the applications from now on, that's the reason why we're doing it, is just to try to prevent some of that, because we've had probably five or six calls. Actually, the couple that was just here for the waiver was one of them that called and said, "Do we really owe you $4,000?" And I was like, you know, "No, you don't." So just to note, that's something else I wanted to make you all aware of. So I think that is it. If you haven't picked up your copy of the comp plan yet, we do have some for you to come and get. It's a lot of reading, so good weekend material for you if you do choose to get a copy. So I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
I would add something. If they can take in any email addresses already at the Oldham County extension office, they got a list of officers, and they would have a name coming to be, and they have an email address on it that looks okay. So I thought it was a fellow officer contacting you. It's a great one.
Yeah.
Look that up, and there's a link in there, and you know, they have an email address.
Yeah. And, right. And some people have been savvy enough, I mean, the email, it actually comes from me, but if you look at it, it'll say rfisher@oldhamcountyky.com or something of that nature. So, or oldhamcounty.ky. They'll change just one little thing of the email address. So just, like I said, just know that that's the reason why information's being redacted. I didn't want people to think, "Well, what are they doing that for?" So that's why.
You can do a reply, and it'll show you who the email address is coming from.
Right.
Or just click on the email address. If you click on the email address, it'll show you what it is. But Ryan is correct, they're getting very close. I mean, some of them, you look and it's like, it's from Ryan Fisher, and then it goes back to bill@gmail.com. Well, he's clearly not Bill, so, but some of them, they're very close.
And...
It's stolen, like, two years ago.
Yeah. And we do not accept gift cards for payment for any sort of hearings or anything like that that we may do at Oldham County Government. Yeah, or wire transfers, so, but definitely not gift cards.
All right, guys. Anything else? Mr. Miller? Yeah. From the newbie section down here on this end of the table, could Mr. Fisher just give us a very brief thumbnail sketch of what to expect on the hearing and potential adoption of the comprehensive plan on October 9th?
A very long PowerPoint. So I will make up for my non-PowerPoint today with, right now, it's sitting at about 148 slides. So be prepared to get comfortable in your seats, and we're going to go over a good chunk of that comprehensive plan.
And at that meeting, will people from the public be able to speak?
It's a public hearing, so yes. And so it could be a long day. The way the statute reads, I mean, that we have to, we're supposed to re-adapt the comprehensive plan every five years, I believe, and it requires a hearing. Our comprehensive plan, we actually extended it last year because Ryan was fairly new in the job, and we were, we wanted to give him plenty of time to get in a position to do that. So, you know, this will be an adoption, and it, again, it is a recommendation to the fiscal court. So the fiscal court then has to have a public hearing as well. So this will be a twofold process, but you all are going to listen to what they've got to say and make a recommendation as to whether or not the plan is drafted should go to the fiscal court.
And all of the legislative bodies have to hear this. So we, after, as well as fiscal court, have to take this to the City of Crestwood, the City of Pee-wee Valley, and the City of La Grange to all get their stamp of approval, so.
Commissioners, for your sake, the input that is meaningful when we get into this discussion is kind of limited. Not to say that we're establishing limits, but it's keep strike or at it is really the question with everything that we're dealing with there. So if you have that type of approach to life, it might make that day go a little bit more quickly. All right? Further questions, guys? Probably that and hydration becomes pretty important on days like that, so yeah.
Will you be letting people know when they have training due?
Yes. There's not too many. I just went over it last week. I don't think there's many that have their expiration of this year. But now with the new requirements, you kind of get a little bit more time. I don't think anybody I saw on here was, and once again, we've got a lot of new board members, too. So I don't think there's too many people. But I'll check again, and I'll email anybody if you all still need training. I've definitely provided you all a lot of options to click on and go look at things. And keep in mind, I don't know if I said this or not, but your all's ongoing education does also include, I don't remember if I said that, the one hour of housing supply. So the new people, one hour, one hour for you all as well. So that's one area that you all are probably going to be deficient in because that's brand new. So if everybody wants to, when you get some free time, click on an hour and go over one of those classes. There's even podcasts on there. You can just pop in some earbuds and listen to somebody talk about housing supply. You can do that as well and get that hour. And look, we've already got one. So, gold star.
All right, guys. Anything else? Go to the cause. Seeing none, we'll stay on the journey. Thank you, everyone.